Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is Monday, December 5th, 2022. It is exactly 6:30, and I would like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to ask, please, that you silence your cellphones and notify the Chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to recognitions. Any recognitions from the Board? Ms. Scott Price?
Madam Chair, I had the pleasure of spending the morning with Amy Lowell at the wastewater treatment facility, and so I'd like to recognize everyone who works there and does a great job. So, of course, Amy Lowell, Wastewater Superintendent, Charles Pyers, Chief Operator, Krusser Keller, Assistant Chief Operator, Stephen Devonis, Corey Malevid, Donald McLaughlin, Maxwell Holbrook, Nathan Remillard, and Philip Henry. So again, I just want to recognize all the work that they do about, you know, with wastewater that we don't think about, but we would think about if we had to, and we just let them know that we really appreciate the work that they do.
Great. Anyone else?
I have one.
Mr. Brown?
You know, on Saturday, I happened to stop by the ice arena to get a couple of burgers from my friend Jamie, who runs the concession there, and there was a skating show going on. And he said, "Go check it out. It's free while I'm cooking your burgers." So I went out and I checked it out, and they had a really beautiful decoration set up on the ice, and the Figure Skating Club was doing their Christmas story about how busy it is at North Pole on the night before Christmas and so forth. And to see all the little kids up in the stands just, you know, really enjoying it, and it was just a great resource and to think that we have that for free. So thanks to the Falmouth Figure Skating Club for that. It's just a great event. I wish I had thought to know about it before and announced it so more people could go, but the place was pretty full, so the word gets out, I guess.
I was just going to say, how was it advertised? I didn't see it. I love to watch. Mr. Patterson?
I just want to do a shout-out to the Chamber of Commerce for the Christmas parade yesterday. It was absolutely terrific. The weather could not have been perfect. I don't know how they arranged that, but it was a delightful parade, and it's always fun to see all those smiling children along the side of Main Street and Davis Straits as we turn the corner. So, anyway.
Thank you. It was fun. Anyone else? No other recognitions, okay? Announcements?
Madam Chair, I have announcements.
Yes, please.
I'd like to announce that on Wednesday, December 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to noon in Redfield Auditorium, that's 45 Water Street in Woods Hole, there is a presentation by Dr. Jessica Hernandez. She's the author of Fresh Banana Leaves: Healing Indigenous Landscapes Through Indigenous Science. And she's going to be presenting about indigenous science in the era of climate change. So again, that's Wednesday from 11:00 to noon in Redfield Auditorium, 45 Water Street.
Great. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Not an official announcement, but just a reminder that that Comcast program, Affordable Internet for folks who are any kind of public assistance or any assistance at all, you might likely qualify for a reduced rate for your Comcast. It's a little bit complicated to fill out the form, but you should check it out. And, you know, if you can't figure it out, get somebody that can help you, because maybe find a young person who can help, because, you know, kids are with the technology these days.
Better than we are. And where do they find the form?
It's on the Comcast website, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to... Thank you. Okay. We will move on to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in any discussion of your topic. It is not appropriate to use public comment to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are possible. Public comment. Yes, please.
Very slowly.
That's okay. Take your time. Please make sure you introduce yourself when you get up.
I don't know. I will. My name is Linda Semortos, and I don't know if this is the right time for this. Last time I came on the 28th, I came too late for comment, and it was in regards to license. So, and I think on tonight's agenda is the license, entertainment license for chivalry. So would I speak to that now or after you do your thing?
Go ahead.
During the hearing, ma'am.
During the hearing.
Yes.
Last time I came too late and couldn't, wasn't allowed.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen Cohen, 597 West Falmouth Highway. I've stood at this microphone on numerous occasions in the last three years advocating strongly for consistent fire and EMS protection in West Falmouth. I come tonight rightfully to thank you, the Board, thank the town manager, the fire chief, and Steve Bush representing the firefighters for the agreement that you've reached that will bring consistent fire and EMS protection, and the lights will be on at the West Falmouth Fire Station. So I thank you very much. I hope we don't have to investigate it again, but we'll always be ready. But the good thing is that residents of West Falmouth can rest a little easy tonight and through the cold of the winter, knowing that that station is manned and the firefighters are there to do their job. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, hearing none. A firm appointment of the Finance Director. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is obviously a very important position for the town. I want to speak briefly about the process before introducing my appointment. Municipal finance positions are notoriously difficult to fill. We advertised this position at the top of the salary range. We mentioned in the ad that there would be, depending on qualifications, a signing bonus available. We included in the ad flexible schedule so that we could, you know, cast as wide a net as possible to attract qualified applicants. We were very pleased to receive three qualified applicants that were interviewed, and I involved in the interview process the Finance Committee Chair, Keith Schwegel, the Town Accountant, Assessor, Treasurer Collector, and the Assistant to the Treasurer and Finance Director. And we have selected the candidate who is with us tonight, who is extremely well-qualified. However, I do want the Board to be aware and the public to be aware that our candidate has said that he is going to retire within two years. So it is a short-term appointment. There was no qualified candidate that was able to serve on a long-term basis. I'm thrilled to have Ed Centio join us for the time that he will be here. He is currently the Finance Director in Yarmouth, where he has impressive accomplishments, of which I have personal knowledge. So I'm pleased to recommend Ed Centio for appointment.
Mr. Centio, would you come up to the podium, please?
Select Board, how are you?
Very well. Anything you would like to share with us before I ask the Board if they have any questions of you?
Well, of course, I did my vetting of the town of Yarmouth and have some inside knowledge of the great people that work for Yarmouth, so I'd be thrilled to take over the position of Finance Director if you deem that's appropriate.
You mean Falmouth?
Falmouth, you mean.
Falmouth.
Automatic.
Yeah, sorry.
Any questions from the Board or comments?
I don't. I saw Mr. Centio's resume, and it's quite impressive, and I'm happy that we were able to talk him into coming down to Falmouth.
Indeed.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Mr. Centio, since you have plans to hopefully retire in the next year or two, what do you feel is appropriate for you to do as far as succession planning?
That is part of, again, what I have done in Yarmouth and other positions. I think it's a matter of networking, potentially bringing in somebody at a particular level with the idea of training them up to become that person over time. So, yeah, it's a tough situation. I've released a number of studies, both internally in Yarmouth and also to other people, where it shows a lot of the people in the Accounting Department, the Collector Treasurers, the Assessors Department are going to be leaving shortly, and that's a big issue. We've done, I think, a good job in Yarmouth, looking for individuals, looking at people where English is a second language, where they're second career people, as Peter did with me, and just canvassing every possible opportunity to identify people that might be the successor in a number of positions.
Thank you. And you're coming into a strong department.
Yes, I am. Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
We certainly appreciate the fact that you're willing to stand in the breach for two years with us to help us get back on our feet with that position and help Peter. We know he's very busy. So thank you for that.
Indeed. Peter's an excellent brain in terms of municipal government, incredibly productive, and open-minded in terms of listening to ideas on how to do things. You know, I came from the private sector, and I wasn't, you know, necessarily mainstream from a Finance Director standpoint, and where I was wrong or maybe not appropriate at the time, he told me, and he backed me 100% in terms of the things that we've accomplished in Yarmouth, which is, you know, right now, we have the highest reserves we've ever had, rivaling Falmouth at this point in time. Also, incredible amount of automation in the finance area. So I think, you know, working with the folks in Falmouth, I think we can accomplish some of those things, and I've already been pushed on, can we automate this particular aspect of working with our exemption programs to make them more efficient as we have in Yarmouth? So, yeah, I look forward to working with the team. I know they're all great from the word I hear on the street and my interactions with them. So, yes, it's going to be a good time here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Further questions? I would move to... Are we appointing or just affirming the appointment of Mr. Centio, Finance Director?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, already five minutes behind. So we're going to go on to business. Consider submitting comments to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection regarding draft of Title V regulations. And Mr. Johnson Staub, we're looking at 25 minutes.
Should be plenty of time. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has released proposed changes to Title V septic regulations that have very serious implications for Falmouth and Cape Cod. So I'm going to provide an overview of the issue. In your packet, you have two comment letters addressing these regulations, which I will speak to toward the end. So the stated purpose of these regulations from the Massachusetts DEP is to enhance protection of embayments and estuaries, to protect them from mutrification caused by nitrogen pollution originating in many locations, primarily from wastewater. In other words, we need to remove nitrogen from septic systems, just, you know, to put it in shorthand, in order to repair impacted embayments and estuaries. So that's what these regulations are seeking to do. The DEP is proposing to do that by amending existing Title V septic regulations, and they have created a new regulation, a new watershed permit. These two things work in tandem with one another in implementation, as I'll go through. So I am not your foremost technical expert on these issues. Falmouth is blessed with many folks who are very well-versed in these issues, and many of them are on the water quality, the wastewater, sorry, the wastewater management...
Water Quality Management.
Water Quality Management Committee. Whew, tripping over it. Water Quality Management Committee and on the Board of Health. Those two boards held a joint meeting on November 21st to have a discussion about these proposed regulations. I understand there was a good presentation from the consultant from Science Wares, Kristin Rathgen, and then a good conversation at that joint meeting. We also have Amy Lowell, our Wastewater Superintendent. She has looked at these regulations, and she has provided comment on the input on the comment letters that we have drafted for your consideration tonight, as has Scott McGann, our health agent. So in terms of the proposed regulations and Falmouth's position, we have a lot of agreement on the goal. The town of Falmouth is very committed to restoring the quality of our impaired estuaries and embayments. And that's not just lip service. That's been backed up with real action. And I've listed here some of the money that has been committed by the town. Forty-nine million in 2014, another 24. That was for the Little Pond Sewer Service Extension, another 24 million that was just approved last year for the upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility. And we have planned for 2024 a $60 million extension of the sewer system to the T-Ticket Acapescot area. So the environmental issue is, you know, is one that is taken seriously by this community, and we are taking action on it. That's not our dispute with these regulations. We do, however, have concerns with some of the specifics contained in the regulations. They require these regulations, and now I'm going to transition to talking about the first set, the Title V septic regulations. And they require replacement of all septic systems with the innovative, so-called innovative alternative septic systems, which we refer to in shorthand as IAs, within the impaired watershed within five years unless the town has an approved watershed permit. And I'll talk about the watershed permit in a moment. There are a number of problems with that proposal to require IAs for all impacted estuaries. First of all, for Falmouth, that's the vast majority of the town that is within one of the 14 impaired watersheds in the town of Falmouth. The cost of IAs is conservatively estimated at $30,000 per household to install. And then there's an annual cost to maintain the innovative alternative septic systems, which is much greater than what you have for traditional systems. So it's expensive to install. It's expensive to maintain. We have concerns about the capacity of the private operators to ramp up, to install so many septic systems in a five-year period, and then to maintain likewise, to ramp up, to do all the maintenance on all of those septic systems across the Cape in a five-year period. But the real kicker is that even with this onerous cost, even if these IAs were all installed, it would not solve our environmental problem. They don't remove enough nitrogen to restore the quality of our impaired embayments and estuaries. So it's really not a viable solution. Now, the regulations, as I say, they work in tandem, and the IAs only have to be installed if the town does not have a watershed permit approved. So, okay, let's look at that option. What does the new watershed permit look like? It requires 75% of... So let me just back up and just say that we have, for our impaired estuaries and embayments, we have studies that show how, what percentage of the nitrogen needs to be removed, and they range up to 100% of the nitrogen that needs to be removed in our embayments. So this watershed permit says that the 75% of the nitrogen reduction target needs to be met within 20 years. So in the case of Falmouth, that means a lot of sewers are going to need to be built. The Water Quality Management Committee and Amy Lowell have developed a plan that incorporates sewer-ing, but also other alternatives such as aquaculture and permeable reactive barriers. So trying to do everything that we can to minimize the cost and also to pace the plan, to pace the construction of the sewers and the implementation of the plan in such a way that it's affordable, that it doesn't spike the tax rate. And this 20-year timeline does not allow us to work within those parameters. It would result in a significant tax burden and a dramatic acceleration of the plan that we have been pursuing. Another element of this timeline is that the watershed permit is going to need to be approved within five years. In order to reach that, my understanding is that we're going to have to slow down on our planning and our work that is right now geared toward installing improvements to remove nitrogen as soon as possible, and delay that a little bit so that we can do planning for all of the 14 watersheds all at once, you know, as opposed to taking them one or two at a time, and because we're not going to be able to afford to do the work on more than one or two at a time. So there's, you know, overall, these regulations entail a loss of control. A loss of local control over the timing of implementing our wastewater plan. And the last thing I'll mention is that if we were required to meet this 75% nitrogen reduction within 20 years, it's a massive construction project tearing up, you know, most of the roads in Falmouth. And, you know, that's ultimately going to need to be done anyway, but to be able to spread it out a little bit more will enable us to have much better plans and mitigate the disruption that it causes. So you have in your packet two detailed letters. They were drafted by the Water Quality Management Committee Chair, Eric Turkington, and Kristin Rathgen of Science Wares. Eric is not here tonight because he's actually at one of the DEP hearings on these proposed regulations. These letters that you have have been reviewed by Amy and Scott and myself, and edits incorporated, and I am comfortable recommending them. I think they're well-crafted to identify the town's concerns. And again, the amendments seek more local control for Falmouth to determine the pace of achieving our nitrogen reduction goals. So that concludes my presentation, and we have Scott and Amy and myself who are prepared to take your questions.
Any questions from the Board? I had two quick comments, but any questions first?
No, I don't have a question. I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I would comment that I think that $30,000 is extremely conservative, given the compressed schedule and the amount of septics that are going to need to be replaced. Personally, I don't believe there's anywhere near enough contractors on Cape Cod to do it, regardless of what the rules are. And then we're going to be having tons of contractors coming from other areas, and when you have that... when you have that much construction happening at such a fast pace, the price escalates quickly. If people are too busy to do the work, they price it higher, and that's just how, how it goes with construction. So I think we'd probably more like 40,000 or more would be a more close average.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments?
I have one.
Go ahead, please.
Just the added staffing to keep up with this that is incalculable at this point. Scott would have to put on extra staff just, just to enforce some of the things with these IAs. And I, I don't know how you get to that number, you know, you find out after the fact. It's like, like flying an airplane while you're building it. I mean, I just, it's, it's pretty concerning thought. I'm in full agreement with Doug that you don't know what you don't know yet. They can tell you what you know, but I don't think that's the way it's going to shake out.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I just want to say that I certainly agree with the objective of Mass DEP in trying to up the requirement for municipalities to respond to this. I mean, we've created the problem, goes back a long way. You know, we've kind of gone into it blindly, most people don't think about these things. But there needs to be a reasoned path forward, one that is financially feasible and logistically feasible, you know, we have the right people here. And of course, I think to add to what Doug just said, you, you force contractors to be working at a very high pace, the quality's likely to go down. So the quality of work that's actually done on, on our behalf would be degraded, I'm sure. Anyway, and so somehow or other, we have to have a balance, and I'm just, I guess I respect Mass DEP for sort of challenging us, but I think there's got to be a process by which we take a look at what it, what would be a reasonable way to move forward. But I think based on my experience, having lived on the Chesapeake Bay, going away for 20 years, coming back and seeing the Chesapeake Bay turned into pea soup, I mean, there's no question in my mind that we are continuing to degrade the environment, and it's going to bite us, and of course, we pass it on to future generations. So we, we, we need to be responsible about addressing the issues that we have, we're continuing to contribute to, but there's got to be, you know, a balance on, and, and a reasonable way of moving forward so that we can actually bear the weight of the financial costs.
Madam Chair, could I just follow up on that briefly?
Please.
One of the points that I probably should have emphasized more is in terms of, you know, looking at it from Mass DEP's standpoint, you know, they're, they're developing regulations to try to fit a number of different communities with different circumstances. And there are some communities for which the 20-year timeframe is probably achievable. Falmouth just isn't one of them. We have, we have almost half of all of the impacted estuaries on the Cape. 14 of 31 are in Falmouth. So, you know, what might work for Wellfleet, Truro, Brewster, you know, it, it does not work for Falmouth. And there's a little bit of a reference to that in the regulations, but it's really at DEP's discretion and full of uncertainty as to how it might be exercised, and I think our objective is to make it a little bit more clear that, you know, we're not going to have to rely on some uncertain interpretation of DEP down the road, but can they amend the regulations to provide clear assurance that Falmouth isn't going to be forced into a timeframe that's just not attainable for us?
Mr. Patterson?
I just want to acknowledge our town council, Mara O'Keefe, testified before one of those open comments periods at Mass DEP, it was last, it was last Thursday, they have got three minutes to make your case, but she did a really great job of laying out the case for Falmouth. So I just want to do a shout-out to her and thank her for trying to go to bat on our behalf, because she made a very strong case, and she did it, and she had two, three minutes to do it, she did it in two minutes and 59 seconds.
Any other comments?
Just one other comment, Madam Chair, is that I feel unfortunately that these, the way this is being approached may have the opposite of its intended effect because I think the reason that Falmouth has been successful to date is because we've laid out a plan that doesn't break the bank, and that we put it out there, and it's clear to the public of what we're doing and what our objective and what our timeframe is, that we're not going to put people in the poorhouse. And if we go too crazy, too fast, the voters are not going to support it. And ultimately, no matter what we decide, the voters are going to have to support paying for this, right? So I hate to see that happen, get on the wrong side of that.
I agree. I just wanted to comment, there are two paragraphs that I think are really significant. If you don't mind, I'd like to read them and highlight them. "If these proposed regulations, which essentially embody the CFL, CLF's demands, are part of a settlement agreement in a lawsuit in which the town of Falmouth is not a party, but whose terms of settlement could cost the property owners of Falmouth nearly a half a billion dollars, the town should be involved." I thought that, that just jumped off the page at me. And then the second paragraph that, that jumped off the page was, "Rather, the intention is to force the towns to agree to enter into watershed permits subject to rigid timetables and DEP enforcement orders, and cleverly bypassing the proposition two-and-a-half prescription against unfunded mandates." And those two paragraphs kind of wrapped it up for me. And while I agree with what we need to do, I don't agree that this is the way to do it.
It's not reasonable.
So I believe that what you're asking us to do is consider submitting the comments that we have in front of us to Mass DEP regarding the draft Title V regulations.
Yes, and, you know, you have two letters, so whether it's one motion or two, just to make clear that there's a letter for the Title V regulation-
Yes.
And another one for the watershed permit.
I would further comment that I think that the constructive criticism on the second letter regarding the watershed permits was excellent and very thoughtful because it shows the, where they may have improved their regulation. So I appreciate the staff taking the time to do that.
Okay, do we have any other questions, Mr. Patterson?
No, no, I was just going to make the motion-
Go ahead.
-to endorse this letter and ask that the town managers, you send it out on our behalf.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for your work on this.
It's on both counts, right, Sam?
Yes.
It was in the two different items, right? It was on both counts.
Both letters.
Yep.
Yes.
Right. And, and thank you to all the staff in the town for all of their contributions. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Scott.
Okay, we will move on to the town manager's preliminary report. Actually, before we do that, Mr. Johnson, stop. Can we back up for one second?
Of course.
Mr. Centenio, Sen-
Centio.
Centio lives on 25 Winter Street. Do we need to do any sort of residency requirement waiver? And I will credit Ms. Scott Price for picking that up.
Yes, indeed. Yes, thank you.
So we would need to vote to waive the residency requirement for Mr. Centio to come to work for us as our finance director.
Assuming he doesn't want to move here for a year or two.
Does he have a nice house? They're expensive.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Scott Price.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Okay, let's move on to the town manager's preliminary report.
Thank you. You have two committee interviews on your agenda for tonight. They are both for the Veterans Council. One is an at-large position, there is one candidate for one vacancy. The other is the DAV representative, Ron Nasef, has been nominated by the DAV. The Board deferred action on this appointment at the November 7th meeting, and as the Board is aware, the Select Board policy for this particular committee provides that the DA, DAV nominee is to be appointed unless the Board has good cause not to appoint. Next on your agenda is the tax classification hearing. This hearing represents the culmination of the work of the town accountant, assessor, and the treasure collector to certify the real estate values, appropriations, and revenue sources for the current fiscal year FY '23 in compliance with state regulations. I would note, property values have risen dramatically since last year, and as a result, the tax rate will go down from $8.05 to $6.92, assuming the Board adopts a single rate. Your packet includes supporting information prepared by Assessor Tricia Favouli, who's with us tonight, which outlines the effect of a split residential-commercial rate. The Board has adopted a single rate in the past for good reason, the commercial base is simply too small to provide a meaningful tax break to residents, to residential taxpayers without a crippling impact on the commercial ratepayers. I recommend approval of the single rate. One other item that can be addressed at a tax classification hearing is a residential exemption, which is intended to shift some of the tax burden from year-round residents to property owners who do not declare their Falmouth property as their primary residence. There are many implications of the residential exemption that would need to be thoroughly evaluated and discussed before making a decision to adopt it. Among the considerations is that it requires every year-round resident to apply for the exemption. Towns that have adopted it have found they need to hire additional staff and retool their finance software to implement the residential exemption. Should the Board have an interest in exploring this option, I would recommend that we take it up at a future workshop meeting and consider a lead time of at least a year and likely longer than a year in order to gear up to be prepared to implement it. You have a second hearing on your agenda tonight, and that is an application for an entertainment license for 285 Main Street, Shiverick's Cafe. This application, as the members will recall, was on a prior agenda, and the Board asked that it be deferred so that we could advertise it as a hearing and notify butters. So that has been done. The applicant is requesting entertainment from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. Should the Board decide to approve the license following public comment, you may want to consider limiting the hours. And the third hearing that you have before you tonight is a flow-neutral bylaw variance, 13 Davis Straits New Creek LLC. This one has been continued several times already, and the applicant is now asking that the application be, that they be allowed to withdraw the application without prejudice. And you have a letter in your packet which addresses the reasons for that. Essentially, they remain optimistic about the project moving forward, and, and their preference is rather than try to have a conditional approval of the variance, that they simply, you know, wait to identify the solution so that a less complicated variance can be approved at a later time. And in the interim, they are undergoing Cape Cod Commission review. We then get to, back to the business, back to business items. You have a report from the Board of Health, that's their annual report. Next on the agenda, we have an intermunicipal agreement for the Upper Cape Rail Transfer Station. This is an agreement with Bourne Mashpee and Sandwich. And on your agenda is consideration of amending the agreement. The town of Bourne has asked to withdraw from the IMA and from the rail transfer station. In order to continue that operation, we would need to amend the agreement to make it a three-town agreement, where it's now a four-town agreement, and then extend it beyond this calendar year. It's due to expire at the end of this month. And that would allow us to in turn extend the contract with the private operator so that that rail transfer station can continue to operate. Next item on your business agenda is an invasive species removal. The owner of 75 Nashewina Streets, Wendy Hill, is seeking to do some invasive species removal on town conservation land. In order to submit an application to the Conservation Commission, the Select Board's approval as owner of the property is required. So I recommend approval so that the Conservation Commission can consider that application. Next on your agenda is a request to allocate American Rescue Act ARPA funds for the Edward Marks Building Improvements. We recently bid out the first-floor renovations project. Those bids unfortunately came in over budget. That is a pressing priority for us to do. The Human Services is operating out of a rented space, and the landlord has indicated that they are anxious to have that, they have permits to renovate the property and pursue a combined residential-commercial use there. And we have a month-to-month lease, so we, we don't have any real security. The landlord has been good about saying that he would wait for the, the Human Services to relocate. But, you know, with the bids coming in over budget, we are looking for these additional funds so that we don't have to delay the project any further. Next on your agenda is to adopt the annual town meeting schedule for April 2023, and then approving license renewals for 2023. And we do have a, a small process change there, the town council has explained that the Board does not need to read the name of every establishment in order to approve those licenses. You can simply refer to the printed list on the agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda. I recommend approval of the transfer of Common Victular License for Cape Cod Bagels. Under administrative orders, the town charter requires the Select Board to reappoint Town Accountant Victoria Rose. Operationally, of course, the town accountant reports to the Finance Director. However, this is a charter and a general law provision that it does require a Select Board approval, and I certainly recommend that appointment without reservation. The remaining items on the consent agenda are self-explanatory, and I recommend approval. The October 3rd minutes have been revised as requested by Doug Brown. The October 24th minutes are being redrafted and will be submitted next meeting. And lastly, you have executive session minutes for September 12th, and I recommend that those minutes not be released when approved. And that concludes my report.
Okay, we will move on to committee interviews. The first one, Veterans Council Committee at Large Position, Brian Holder. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Step right up to the podium, please. Anything you would like to tell us about yourself?
I don't know if you've looked at my resume, but I've had a few years in the military and working with government service. I retired after 22 years in the Navy as a Lieutenant Commander in the United States Navy. I've worked with veterans. Prior to going in, prior to becoming veterans, as an executive officer, I had to counsel all the people that were leaving the military on what their benefits were and so on and so forth. And I had worked, upon retiring from the Navy, I went to work for the federal government at the Naval Undersea Warfare Center in Newport, Rhode Island. And I recently moved here about a year and a half ago, and I'm interested in getting involved in the Veterans Affairs here to help out my fellow veterans.
Great. And firstly, I'll say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Questions? Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Sir, you seem very qualified. I would move appointment.
Oh, God, sir, don't go anywhere yet. Go, say that again, Mr. Brown.
I said he certainly looks very qualified, and I would move appointment.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
Position will be six through 6:30, 23. Okay, we are second. DAV Representative, Ron Nasef. Did I say your name correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up.
I brought in some copies of my CV and articles.
I could distribute them to you.
You can bring them up, certainly.
I didn't want to flood you with paperwork, so I made three photocopies, and I see there's six of you, so that'll work out very nicely.
Just the CV and just the article back.
Sure.
The back, it's just the article, I'll move it.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to tell us, or would you just like to receive questions from the board?
Well, I'm, I'm not completely familiar with the position. I was asked by Ron Dyer to participate, and he's done so much for veterans. And I attend the veterans' meetings, and I often lecture about medicine, or law, or history, and, and I think the veterans enjoy that, so Ron must have thought I was somewhat knowledgeable and thought I'd be a good candidate for this position. As a retired orthopedic surgeon, I, I think I have a good understanding of disabilities, hundreds of disability evaluations, if not thousands in my career, so I, I would like to help, I would like to participate. I understand you have some concerns, so- I understand you have some concerns, so I...
Any concerns from the board?
I didn't see any. I read all the information we were presented previously, and I see this here. So I think if that is the recommendation of the Disabled American Veterans Group, then I would be willing to so appoint Mr. Nasef. But I'll wait for other comments from the other board members.
Okay.
Madam Chair, yes, I had concerns, Mr. Nasef. We did receive some information about your medical license being revoked, and I don't, I, you know, I'm not sure how much is appropriate to go into, but I was wondering if you'd like to speak to that.
Yes, I would. 10 years ago, I was probably the busiest orthopedic surgeon in the state. I was so very busy. And when you're very busy, you have a disproportionate share of litigation, malpractice suits. And at one point, my licensing board said, "You should stop operating." And I did. I stopped operating. I went into a period of probation. During that time, I had an office, I had an unlicensed physician helping me in the office, putting on casts and things that, and licensing board said, at some point, said, "It appears to us you're allowing an unlicensed doctor to practice medicine," which was not true, not true. You can have anybody help you in the office. And I argued back. I said, "He doesn't make diagnoses, he doesn't give injections, he just helps me, he does billing, does scheduling." But nevertheless, they persisted, and they suspended my ability to reapply for my license. At this point, right now, I'm seeking reinstatement. I've just applied, I'm waiting for a hearing from them. But I assure you, there's no unethical, no immoral behavior. I never crossed the line with a patient or my practice. I never wrote a prescription that wasn't indicated. I served in two combat theaters, obeyed all my orders, Persian Gulf War, and then Iraqi Freedom. I was a reserve officer. I wasn't active duty like this gentleman, but I'm sure he'll tell you, when you're active duty, you're active duty. So again, I think I can help people, and I enjoy doing that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just one briefly, and forgive me if this sounds argumentative, but you just said that you were a retired surgeon, but now you just said you're seeking to have your license reinstated. For what reason?
I'm seeking to come out of retirement. Well, at 70 years old, I'm still a healthy individual, I think. I'm active, I don't smoke or drink, and I'd just like to perhaps do a little more if I could. Maybe I've had some opportunities to work, start an orthopedic clinic at a VA hospital, even the Falmouth Hospital. I go to their regular tumor board meetings and things, and they could use some help. There is a shortage of orthopedists in the state, particularly on the Cape. So I wouldn't go back to surgery, but I'd work in a clinic if the opportunity presented itself. But I live full-time in Falmouth, and this is where I hope to live the rest of my life.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just comment that I would remind my fellow board members that I don't think it's required to be a doctor to do this job. It's just helping veterans. I would suspect you probably want, your motivation is to clear, end your career on a high note rather than...
I do that now. I visit veterans when in the hospital, as part of the veterans' groups. I help a lot, I advise them, and sometimes I'll write a letter for them to their treating doctor. But I certainly don't practice medicine without an active license.
Right.
Yeah, just to clarify, that was a concern that was brought to us by a citizen that I wanted, I wanted to have addressed.
Well, unfortunately, when something happens, the ball starts rolling on you, and it's just overwhelming. I mean, I had this one licensing issue, but there were newspaper articles, and it's on the internet. One of you, and I don't blame you, said there's some things on the internet, and I've got calls from people, and said, "Oh, my goodness." But again, there's nothing, it's embarrassing to be challenged, your credentials, your skills, your competence, but there's nothing, again, unethical or immoral. I've always respected my patients and never, ever crossed the line in that respect, and that's why they're allowing me to seek reinstatement. I've got some education, I've gotten board certified. I didn't get board certified until I was 65, but I did. Took them a few times, took my boards a couple of times. But I finally have the time to study. I did bring a list of the surgeries I did the last couple of years. I've got a stack of them to show you, to show you. I was very busy, I was too busy. I should have said no to people, but I never say no to anybody.
Thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to appoint Mr. Nasef to the Veterans Council as a representative of the Disabled American Veterans.
Okay, I have a motion?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
But you are appointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, sir.
Okay. We will move on to the tax classification hearing, Ms. Favouli, and I'm going to ask that Ms. Scott Price read the hearing notice.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 5, 2022, at 7:15 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, MA. Under Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended by Chapter 369 of the Acts of 1982 and Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983, the Falmouth Select Board will conduct a public hearing on whether the town of Falmouth should implement the Classification Act. At said hearing, the Select Board will hear a presentation regarding the allocation of the fiscal 2023 tax levy, which will determine the share of taxes which each property classification shall pay. The Board of Assessors shall provide all information and data relevant to making a decision of allocating the tax burden, including the fiscal effects of the available options. Per order of Select Board, publication date Friday, November 18, 2022, Town website.
Thank you. Ms. Favouli, welcome.
Thank you, Board, Town Manager, Tricia Favouli, Director of Assessing. I've given you all information in your packet, and I'm going to briefly go over each one of the items that we're considering tonight. During the tax rate classification hearing, the Select Board is asked to consider several statutory exemptions. Each exemption real allocates the tax burden among and within the major classes of property under the mass general laws established. There are four classes of real property: residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. Two of these is added to personal property class under Chapter 59-18. When setting a tax rate, there are five options that you will consider tonight. One, a residential factor of one, where all classes of property are taxed in the same rate. Adopting a residential factor of one will leave us with one option for a tax rate. As the Town Manager stated earlier, our new tax rate will be $6.92 per thousand. So that would be a vote to adopt a residential factor of one. The next one would be an adoption of a small commercial exemption, which would grant a tax reduction of up to 10% to commercial properties assessed at less than $1 million and with fewer than 10 employees. Many of our small commercial businesses in Falmouth are not property owners, they tend to be tenants. So adopting this exemption would shift the higher tax rate to commercial-industrial properties, which are over $1 million. Our next adoption would be an adoption of open space exemption. Town of Falmouth has many parcels of open space, but we, in our town, tax those as unbuildable parcels. Most of them are in your subdivisions, and they may be this little piece of land that's in your cul-de-sac, or a strip of open space that protects you from an abutting property. We've got town-owned open space, so ours are virtually unbuildable for all of them, so it's very, very low in their tax rate. And then we move on to an adoption of a residential exemption, which can shift up to, but not more than 35% of the residential domicile properties. It must be the person of a resident. On January 1, the taxpayer must be the owner. They cannot be a trustee of a trust with no beneficial interest, can't be my mom living in the house with me owning it, can't be a tenant. Residential exemptions also do not affect apartment buildings that may house affordable housing. So it's something that we need to look at and spend some time on, as our Town Manager mentioned. There are many impacts to the residential exemption straight across the board, from staffing levels to money, to having second homeowners bear a higher tax rate. And also, along with that, there's a cutoff point where residents would pay a higher tax bill annually. And your next adoption would be an adoption of a split tax rate using a residential factor four. Splitting the rate, all business properties and personal property would carry the burden of the higher tax rate. And I gave you the effect of the shift at 150%. That would be shifting to commercial, industrial, personal property, separate from the residential exemption. The Department of Revenue recommends that the percentage of commercial-industrial property should be above 25%. And right now, the town of Falmouth only has 7% of commercial-industrial property, including personal property for second homes. So considering the analysis and the financial impact, the Board of Assessors recommends to the Select Board a factor of one and reject residential, open space, and small-business exemptions. And at this point, I would open it up to any questions you might have.
Awesome. Questions from the board? This comes up every year. Mr. Patterson?
No, I just, you know, I'm, I think I'm in favor of the residential tax exemption, but I certainly appreciate the complexity and the need for us to do that on a transitional sort of basis. So I'm very pleased to hear that we're thinking about it, we're looking at ways to actually sort of move in that direction. I see what's happened in my own subdivision, and, you know, the number of properties that have been turned into business properties that were formerly residential properties, where we had, you know, people who supervised businesses. And we know, looking up and down Main Street and listening to the Chamber of Commerce, that keeping employees, being able to pay them enough to be able to afford it, this town is a huge challenge. So I think we need to find some steps in the right direction, and I'm more than willing to wait and go through a process of taking a closer look at this to make sure that the impacts are as equitable as possible.
Right. We have to look at the impact because obviously there's a cutoff point. Right now, it would be about $710,000, and anybody above that would end up paying a higher tax bill. So we have to look at that impact of that rise of a tax value in the actual homeowner. We have a lot of our seniors that, right now, are in those homes that are over the 710. We have a lot of our veterans that are over that 710. So if we're granting them a residential exemption and they're saving $500, but their taxes are going up, we're counterbalanced. And we also need to look at some of the other exemptions that might, we might be able to do. Circuit Brake Tax has a program that we could relate to our seniors. There's others, there's probably about six to seven other adoptions that we could look at as local options that would save some money for some of our folks out there. So there are other avenues that we can take a look at also.
Great.
Okay. Thank you for your work. Do I have a motion?
Could I have one more question?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Mr. Brown.
Do you think that when we come back next year to discuss this, we might have a better handle on, considering the residential exemption?
I think we'd have to do a study on it and actually determine how many people are going to qualify. The first step is, it's going to be a board policy on what you're looking for and what your thoughts are. We have to look at funding. There is no way that my office could handle 13,000 applications for any type of abatement or exemption. It's just not physically possible. I have two clerks. They're working as fast as they can right now. So it's a staffing issue, and it's also a software issue because we're going to have to update our software. My software that we work with right now will not handle, there's no programs for it, so we'd have to write those programs. So that's another hurdle that we'd have to cover.
It sounds like it is a process that we would not be able to complete in a year, I don't think. I think we'd really have to take some time, but I'd actually like to defer to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I think the first step would be, I would like to hear from you as a board if you want us to spend, you know, if you want us to prepare a workshop meeting to explore this issue more fully. And we, you know, we might want to, not necessarily at the same meeting, but we might want to look at it in tandem with another policy issue that has been raised, particularly by Doug Brown, which is short-term rental regulation. And, you know, they could go hand in hand, or they could be, it could be one or the other, but it is, it's a tremendous amount of work, so I'm not planning to, you know, to gear up to be ready to do this next year just now. I want to, you know, I want to hear from you if you want us to have a workshop meeting to address these issues and, you know, have a full, you know, where we're better prepared to answer all of your questions and provide more data and analysis. And then after that, we'll, you know, we'll talk about what the timeline, you know, if you want to move forward with it, and what the timeline might be.
And I'm not sure now is the time to even direct you to do that. And this is just my opinion, because there's so many, there are so many other things going on, and right now, we're in the heart of the budget season.
Right.
And so I would ask that we not direct the Town Manager at this time to look into this. However, I agree that at some point, it isn't coming upon the board to take a look and to think about policy. I just don't think the timing is right.
Well, I agree with that. I'm just, you know, I know Mashpee just adopted it, and I just feel like I'd like to be more knowledgeable about it, and I can do my own reading, but I think if we all work on it, at some point, maybe at the end of winter, if there's a time when we have a little slack time, we can...
Is there slack time, Mr. Brown?
Maybe after town meeting.
I was going to say, maybe in July.
No, that's, that's fun to...
Okay, Mr. Patterson?
I think more of the winter.
I just want to say that this topic keeps coming up in the Affordable Housing Committee over and over again, looking for some opportunities to try to figure out how people who work in this community can afford to live in this community. And, you know, this is one thing that we can look at, but I'm not trying to push this through immediately, but I do want us to take it seriously because there are an awful lot of citizens, well, a huge number of people that are commuting into Falmouth to actually work here, because they can't afford to live here. And that's so different from 30 years ago when my wife and my family first moved here. So I just don't want us to shove it into the back burner, so to speak, but make sure that we can start addressing it and work in a kind of methodical way, and look at other municipalities to see how they may be addressing this, and what's worked and what really is falling short. So thank you.
I think your point is well taken. Do I have a motion?
Oh, yep.
Someone want to close the hearing?
Is there a public comment on that, or?
We can do public comment, yes. Thank you.
I'd like to close the hearing.
Any public comment on the matter?
On your matter?
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing, so...
Not yet, because the dissent has not been addressed.
Who, is that you?
I pay taxes as a sound of my primary residence for, since 1985.
Would you like to come to the podium and give a comment in the hearing? Would you like to come to the podium and make a comment?
Am I right?
You, certainly.
That's the process, sir.
Yeah. Would you like to come up? Okay.
I don't follow on TV or local media, but, you know, printed videos on my...
Okay, if you have, if you have a comment about this hearing and this topic, you are welcome to come up to the podium. Otherwise, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Sure. Does anyone want to go home now?
Sir, would you like to come up and make a comment?
Falmouth is my home. It's 1985.
Okay, have us, come right up to the podium, please, sir.
Watch your sword from table. I'll be going there to see the mayor.
Good friend, Mayor Ferrentini. Louis Carboni, East Falmouth resident since 1980, came down in 1979, actually, to work at Boccassett Mental Health Center.
Do you have a comment on this issue, sir?
Which issue, ma'am?
The issue with the tax issue.
All due respect to the chair. All due respect to the chair. Sorry, ma'am, my hearing...
We're having a hearing on the tax classification. Do you have a comment on that matter?
I pay taxes by an illegal commercial zone.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
It's 1985.
Okay. Anything else on the tax classification?
I like to do entertainment on my property.
Okay, that's a separate issue?
The Falmouth Pet Resort, I can't, I can't do Cape Cod Pet Resort, I work there.
Okay, we're talking about the tax classification. If you have any more comments specific to that, we are open to hear them. Otherwise, I'm going to close the hearing.
You can pull the plug on me. Go ahead, pull the plug on me. What time do we close the building?
Sir, okay, I'm going to ask you to sit down, please. We've taken your comment, thank you very much, and I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll go home, I'll walk home or I'll drive home.
Okay. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's earned.
Madam Chair, I move that the town of Falmouth continues to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one, and to reject the residential, commercial, and open-space exemption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Favouli. Okay, our next hearing is an application for an entertainment license for Olive Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Chivrix Cafe and Bar, 285 Main Street, Falmouth.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto that Olive Restaurants Incorporated, doing business as Chivric Cafe and Bar, has applied for entertainment license located at 285 Main Street, Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, December 5, 2022, at 7:15 PM on the above application. Per order of the Select Board, publication date Friday, November 25, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Okay, do we have the applicant here for the entertainment license?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. Here, where we at?
Okay, do we have questions on this application?
Just to refresh, we were concerned about the process that we had, and so, rather than prove this at the last meeting, we chose to do the public outreach, notify the abutters in case they had any concerns that they wanted to bring here today, so that we could hear them publicly. So, I would suggest that if there are any abutters, Madam Chair, if you might want to invite them to comment.
Yes, please.
Are we not in public?
Do we have any abutters who would like to speak to this application?
I think we can, where?
Peter, do you have a copy of the agenda? Is there a copy of the agenda that you can give this gentleman, so he can follow the meeting, please?
Sure.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes, that would be great. Any concerns, any public concerns about this entertainment license?
Thank you, Peter. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Good idea.
Well, can I ask the question of the
Yes.
of the proprietor?
Sir?
You are, I think you mentioned that you want to be able to use amplified music, you know, as part of the entertainment, right? And I'm worried about the fact that there are so many residents that are relatively close to your establishment. We've had issues with other, I know I'm probably questioning you, but I at least want you to be aware of that making sure that that amplified music stays down to a reasonable level and doesn't carry beyond the walls of your restaurant is really important. And you haven't, we have, we have no history with you, so I don't mean to accuse you, but I just, I guess I just want to raise that concern because I know that's a concern of a lot of the people that live around that restaurant. So, that's.
Absolutely.
It's a concern to me, too.
Love to hear that. Thank you.
And the other thing, I just am going back, and I'm looking at our, the town manager's recommendation. And are you open to modifying the hours for that license?
Is there something more on this one?
You've currently applied to, the license extends to 1:00 AM in the morning.
Right.
Would you be willing to stop at 11:00 PM?
What if people are having a good time?
The concern is that you're in a residential area and thinking about adjusting the license so that it doesn't go to 1:00 AM in the morning.
Okay.
Would you be available to that?
Sure.
And any suggestions from the board about an adjustment?
Would that be on weekends as well, Madam Chair? Would that be the suggestion?
It's up to the board if you want to make that suggestion.
Sort of a flexible thing. Well, it's sort of up to you, too, to think about what it is that you could live within with your entertainment license. If I could, Madam Chair, I don't mean to just go on.
No, I think it makes sense.
I was just going to say, maybe take the public comment and then come back to that issue.
That would be great. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
So, just hang on. We'll take public comment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Could you give?
My name is Linda Simortos.
Thank you.
I live at 137 Main. Thank you. And a butter directly behind Timber with my neighbor, Nick Maggio. And I realize we're not discussing Timber's current app for license tonight, but that of Shiverick. So, I'm here to support abutters of Shiverick. It doesn't seem like any of them are here tonight, but I'm so passionate about this because of what I've been going through. At least Shiverick is applying for an entertainment license upfront, unlike Timber, a Longfellow property, which has been operating with no entertainment license since approximately June.
Can we speak, you need to speak to Shiverick, please. That's the only thing we're considering right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. So, I'm just speaking to Shiverick that hopefully, everything gets taken into consideration for neighbors. That's what I'm speaking to.
Thank you. Can I have a question?
For Tuga's hearing.
Please, go ahead.
I'd like to ask a question. I know, I know we're talking about Shivericks and not Timber.
Yes, yeah, so it's right in between, you know? I'm so passionate about it.
I understand. Could you
Thank you.
Because we're talking about timeframe and what
Yes.
we think a reasonable time would be, and since there's no abutters there.
Yes.
In your opinion, what do you think a reasonable time would be?
I think 11, 11 would be reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that input.
Yeah, and volume control.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have the two modulations, ma'am?
Sir, I'm going to ask you not to speak out, please.
Thank you for asking.
You're welcome. If I could have the applicant come back to the podium?
We have another public comment.
Do we? Oh, Mr. Finneran. I'm sorry, I did not see your hand.
Stand here or maybe one of them?
Yep. Well, you can just stand. You don't have to go back to your chair.
I'd just like to point out that there are other entertainment licenses on Main Street, and I don't think anybody knows the last time there's been any kind of problem there. And I think that Ilya's is, deserves to have the same license that they have. There's very few doors in between, and there's, you know, residential units there, and, I mean, their families operated business in this town for decades, and they do a fine job, and I don't see why he wouldn't do a fine job with this. And I think to penalize him before he's even out of the box is unfair, and it's inconsistent.
Thank you, Mr. Finneran. Any other public comment?
May I take the poll?
Go ahead, sir.
Louis Carbone?
Come up to the podium, please.
Boundaries, permits? Where are the microphones? Boundaries, permits, Madam Chair?
Could you go up to the podium, please, and make your comment?
What time does Town Hall close tonight?
When we finish the meeting. What would you like to say?
When the meeting finished.
What would you like to say on this issue, sir?
I'd like to entertain at the depot when the railroad comes into town someday. I hope they run it right over the bridge.
Would you like to make a comment on this issue, sir?
For live entertainment? I entertain live all the time.
For this particular license?
I don't have a license to entertain.
Okay, we're not talking about you. We're talking about this issue.
I'm not personalizing it, ma'am.
Would you like to make a comment on this application?
To the public?
Yes.
About entertaining with a license? Is there a license for entertainment? I don't have one.
Okay, sir. Have a seat, please.
I don't have, I don't have a license for entertainment, ma'am.
Okay, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about you, sir. Have a seat, please.
I don't personalize this. If I wanted, I like to entertain for the dog.
Sir, sir, you're disrupting my meeting, and I'm going to ask you to sit down one more time.
Falmouth Pet Resort.
I'm going to ask you to sit down one more time. I'm going to ask for an officer, please.
The one Randy Agers, East Falmouth.
Is he on his way? Thank you. Sir, have a seat. Have a seat.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Here?
So moved. Sir, no, over there.
Sit, sit right there.
Over there.
The crowd, please.
Sit, sir, I've asked you to sit over there. I'm going to ask you one more time.
Present?
If this disruption continues, we're going to, I'm going to take a recess.
Madam Chair, I'm going to sit near Falmouth.
Thank you.
I want to entertain. I don't have a license.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to be quiet one more time.
Both cups on.
Do we have an officer on his way? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I'll
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Sir, stop. Any conversation about this application? Any suggestions?
Well, I'm a little distracted by this gentleman. I'd like to request the chair, request this gentleman leave the meeting.
We, we have an officer. We have it. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
The board is going into recess.
Can I have a question?
No, we can't. It's a public meeting.
Can I have a question?
Does he?
Mr. Mortis?
Okay. Thank you very much. And let me just apologize to the public for that interruption. Sometimes those things happen, and I, I hope Mr. Carbone is well. So, we will go back to the application for the entertainment license. I believe we had a motion and a unanimous option to close the hearing. Thank you. And so, conversation among the board regarding the application.
I just want to say, I want to support the commercial venture. I don't want to really handicap, you know, his ability to, you know, bring in revenue. But, and so, a compromise to me might be that we would go to 11 o'clock during the weekdays, but then on Friday and Saturday nights, allow you to go to a 1:00 AM closing.
Well, that's just for the entertainment.
That's just for the entertainment part. That's not for your business. You can obviously still serve. But would that be agreeable to you?
Absolute.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So, to be clear, it's Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Friday night and Saturday night would be until 1:00 AM.
Correct.
And if you think that that's
Nope.
If you think that's reasonable, we could proceed it that way. If you find that it's Thursday nights, you wish it could stay open later, you can always come back. Is that right, Mr. Johnson, stop? He could come back to amend it if he finds he needs more hours?
Yes, that would require an amendment of the license, but that could certainly be entertained, no pun intended, by the board at a future date.
And I don't want to, I hope that we don't put unreasonable restrictions. Do you feel like these are something that you can work with? 11 o'clock and 1:00 on the weekends?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I'm actually the one that asked for this to be held over, to give the director abutters the opportunity to speak about this, and they didn't come.
Yeah, right.
So, with Mr. Finneran's statement, whatever everybody else is doing, it's only fair. If the abutters had the opportunity, it was publicly noticed, and they didn't come to voice their opposition, I don't know why he should be treated any different.
That's certainly a fair, fair point.
And that would be my position on that.
Yeah, and I, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, let's just wait, you conduct your business, and then if we get complaints, then we can bring it up again, right? But, so, so I will, I will move that we approve this application.
As submitted. Will move as submitted?
No, as submitted, yes, without the restrictions on hours. So, open till 1:00 AM. And assuming you're going to be a good neighbor and everything moves smoothly, that, that's where it'll stand. So, you know, and I understand that sometimes you have, you want to do karaoke. Well, you can't do karaoke without some kind of amplification. But, but anyway, that, so we'll leave it at that.
I'll happily second Mr. Patterson's motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, but I also have a conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make a couple of comments, and I'm not, you know, seeking to
Yes, that would require an amendment of the license, but that could certainly be entertained, no pun intended, by the board at a future date.
And I don't want to, I hope that we don't put unreasonable restrictions. Do you feel like these are something that you can work with? The 11 o'clock and the one on the weekends?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I'm actually the one that asked for this to be held over, to give the Director Butters the opportunity to speak about this, and they didn't come.
Yeah, right.
So with Mr. Finnerman's statement, whatever everybody else is doing, it's only fair. If the Butters had the opportunity, it was publicly noticed, and they didn't come to voice their opposition, I don't know why he should be treated any different.
That's certainly a fair point.
And that would be my position on that.
Yeah, and I, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, let's just wait, you conduct your business, and then if we get complaints, then we can bring it up again. Right? But so, so I will, I will move that we approve this application.
As submitted? Will move as submitted?
No, as submitted, yes, without the restrictions on hours. So open till 1:00 a.m. Assuming you're going to be a good neighbor and everything moves smoothly, that, that's where it'll stand. So, you know, and I understand that sometimes you have, you want to do karaoke. Well, you can't do karaoke without some kind of amplification. But, but anyway, that, so we'll leave it at that.
I'll happily second Mr. Patterson's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, but I also have a conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make a couple of comments, and I'm not, you know, seeking to sway the board necessarily one way or other. I just want to make sure you have good information for your decision. So two points. One, I don't know, as I sit here today, exactly what the entertainment licenses are across Main Street. I don't know how many of them go to 1:00 a.m. There may very well be others that go to 1:00 a.m., but I don't have that data here now. And second, it is much more difficult to take away a license right than it is to grant it. So I don't know that it is a straightforward, we changed our mind and we're going to go to 11:00 as opposed to 1:00 a.m. I think it may, you may need to show cause at that point. So I just want to point out that, you know, it's easier to start small and then be more generous later than it is to be generous and then be less generous.
I take it back.
So is what you're saying that if we go till 1:00 a.m. and then there's complaints, is that ju, is that good cause to then?
Revisit it?
Revisit the license?
It could be if there's sufficient number of complaints, but there, you know, you may be required to meet some sort of a standard at a hearing to demonstrate that there's a reason to remove the, or to change the license hours.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
You can do everything you said on the first application.
As submitted.
No limits, but.
So you can call Mr. Tyler and ask him to come down?
Yes.
Okay.
Best of luck. Best of luck.
Okay, we're looking, number three on public hearings, flow neutral bylaw, and we have a letter that they have asked that we allow them to withdraw without prejudice at this time.
I need to read the hearing notice?
Yes.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 22nd, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, MA, on the application of New Creek LLC for wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw, for mixed residential-commercial overlay district development with affordable rental housing at 13 Davis Straits in said Falmouth, parcel 3915-049D004. Pour order of Select Board publication date, Friday, August 5th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, if the, if the board is amenable, you could entertain a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, moving on to business. We have a report from the Board of Health. And you are slated for 15 minutes.
This is where one of those clinicians would come in handy, right?
Good evening, Select Board, and Mr. Peter Staub, Johnson Staub, sorry. Diana Malloy is the Chair of Falmouth Board of Health. I've been with the Board for about seven and a half years, and just some of you I haven't met, so looking forward to working with you. And we'll just give you a little update tonight. Just a brief background. I am a nurse by trade and work in community health in our community, and had the honor of working with George Chufelder, Kevin Kroger, Stephen Rafferty was with us for part of the year, and his term was up and he retired from the Board. John Waterbury, who was on the Board for many years, has been, joined us back, and Ben Van Noy, who just recently resigned. Ben is actually in Antarctica at the moment, so we will, all of, it's a great team. And I'm proud to be working with it. Just a listing of the staff. You know, of course, we work very closely with Scott. He attends all our meetings, and the other members of his staff that, that support us. Just gonna, and where's the, for a button? Enter, okay. Just to give you a little background on, from 9:21 to 11:22, COVID didn't hit the top of our list this year for the first time. We've had 84 septic, Title V septic issues that we've worked with, housing issues. We have had the COVID updates, and as you know, it's, it's still around, but hopefully things are more manageable these days and doesn't take up quite as much time as, as it did when it was in the pandemic stages. We've been working with the Solid Waste Advisory Group and working on our recycling regs. We addressed public and semi-private pool regulations, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Tobacco poultry regulation, after our public forum, we found that we didn't really need to do anything at this time with poultry regulations. And then we have done, done a lot of work with potential stable regulations based on, we have a current bylaw in the town, but we've been working on some drafts that we hope in the future we'll be able to work through. Scott, or I guess, Peter, you presented earlier on the proposed Title V changes, so it has a huge impact, obviously, on our town and what we would do, but given that presentation, I'm not going to go into depth, but we'll keep an eye on all that, and we made our comments. Solid waste regulations, we've spent a lot of time with Alan Robinson, the Chair, and Assistant Amy Roth in developing our mandatory solid waste regulations based with all the work that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee has been doing. We've worked closely with them over the year. And we have a final draft that's under review by the Town Council, and we hope to have everything up and running with that, January 22. And really have a lot of respect for Amy, and Alan did a lot of work and really helped us to come up to speed on recycling. We've had a couple of commercial septic-related concerns this year. The Auto Camp has been challenged by their ongoing issues of functioning of their system and essentially putting in a whole new system, quite an elaborate process, and we've been working with them and getting updates as they go along. Since August 29th, when we could not get the system in compliance, no matter what they did, they've had 100% of their septic waste hauled off-site so that there's been no threat to the public safety in what their challenges are. And that will continue until the system that they're replacing is up and running and functioning well. We've worked with the engineers in Auto Camp, and again, just had another update from them tonight. Tried to address the community's concerns about it, and I think we've made some big progress. The Tides Motel had a fail system that was identified with the sale of the motel last spring or early summer. We worked with their new owners to adjust and identify a system that would provide absolute minimal waste into the ground as they are surrounded by water on the three sides down there. And when the system could not be installed timely for the season opening of the motel, we voted to have a tight tank system set up so that, again, 100% of their sewage is hauled off-site for the whole season. So there's been, again, no public safety concern. And they anticipate their system will be up and functioning before they open for the 2023 season. Several housing issues related to complaints, ongoing issues, and we just try to bring those to resolve with the homeowners and work with them closely. Scott and his team do a lot of inspections out there and revisits to try to make sure things are in compliance. Stable regulations were developed in the 70s, and didn't have a lot of detail to them, so we've, as you may be very aware, that there's been some stable issues with a certain stable in town that has brought a lot of issues to a head. So we've been working to try to expand those, and again, our request will be in the April 23 Town Meeting to support, to repeal the current bylaw and provide the Board with the authority to develop, implement, and enforce a more robust set of regulations. So that's in process of being drafted for Town Meeting article with Town Council. We're looking to update our local septic regs, but of course, what Mass Department of Environmental Protection does with their regulations will have an impact, so we're kind of, I don't want to say is put it on hold, but kind of waiting to see how that all shakes down. May 31st, we had a tragic death in a local semi-private motel pool. And so we did a lot of review with the owners and came up with a list of improvements that we felt that would increase the security to the pool. And Scott, throughout this, worked with the state officials reviewing all the regulations. The owners came into compliance with our requirements very quickly, and at the time, we took that opportunity to review our pool regulations as well. So every, not that that triggers it, but that wouldn't have been on our list of high priorities without that tragic event. So sometimes things happen and make you look at it. We want to give special recognition to Stephanie Mailey. She's been representing the Women's League of Voters, has been a loyal attendee at every one of our meetings. She's been a big support to the Board, and so I just wanted to publicly be able to thank her for her participation with the Board. And Scott and the team, we want to thank all of you for the ongoing support you've provided over the last couple of years. It's been a real challenge with COVID and really have felt the support of the Select Board in all that we've been doing. And who knew, you know, what we were going to be up against. But Scott, during that time, juggled multiple priorities. He, he worked seven days a week, long days, maintained that public health spirit, and really tried to keep going with all the other functions the department had. And communicate with all of us and the community as a whole. So again, we're very proud to be working with him, and I publicly wanted to be able to thank him for his extreme efforts in the pandemic. Do you have any questions?
Just to say amen for your last comments.
Yeah.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Business number two, consider votes to amend intermunicipal agreement among the towns of Falmouth, Sandwich, Massey, and Bourne, Massachusetts, for the maintenance and operation of a regional municipal services facility at Joint Base Cape Cod. This is on for 10 minutes, and you do have the agreement in your packet, and Mr. Johnson Staub, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You also have two motions to affect the two actions that I referenced in my preliminary report. I would only add that the town has been very ably represented on the intermunicipal agreement. The, I should say, the, the joint rail transfer station is governed by the four towns, and Ray Jack, our former DPW director, has been the town's representative to that collaborative, and he is here this evening, should the Board have any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the Board?
No, I actually, I actually prompted Ray just before this meeting started, but I think it would really help the citizens to know just the function that the joint, that this joint facility actually provides in a, in a very short way. And we, we could use a little entertain, education ourselves. So can you give us an idea of what it does for the citizens of the communities that are actually participating in it?
Thank you. I'm glad to be here this evening. Good evening, everyone. It's been a while. Yes, the transfer station was created in 1987, and the original concept, by some, has been lost. It serves a vital need of facilitating solid waste removal from the upper Cape towns, specifically Bourne, Mashpee, Sandwich, and Falmouth. But its primary goal was actually to alleviate the truck traffic, namely that when CMAS opened, the, the hauling trucks in all of their forms, whether it be tractor trailers or 31 yarders, would necessarily have to go over the bridge in order to get the CMAS and then return. So it had two major effects. One, it impacted traffic, and two, it impacted the route in that when that trash truck is gone from a route, for whatever reason, it has a significant delay effect on it. So it made the trash collection system much more efficient. It also provided for enhanced recycling. It has a rail spur associated with it, and due to that rail spur, we're able to transport by train. So that's where the truck traffic is eliminated. We still maintain collectively, all four towns, that facility. It's still operational, currently operated by Cavosa Disposal Corporation. So the upper Cape towns, through the acts of the Board managers, have basically allowed the use of the facility for Cavosa's operation in order to maintain the facility, namely that, I think it was 20, around 2018, when we began to cease operations at that facility, and that was because Bourne, when they had the full permitting capacity of their landfill, was no longer taking the volume of trash to the facility that they had done before. And Falmouth was the biggest participant in that historically. So it was determined when Falmouth went with the landfill option with the town of Bourne, and then Bourne had withdrawn its volume from the facility, was no longer effective for us to continue that operation at that time. So then that's when the Cavosa option became available. We availed ourselves of that. Annually, there are reports that are filed. Each town now has no costs associated with the facility for maintaining it. Mr. Cavosa takes care of all of the maintenance of the facility, and we get an annual return of about $35,000 a year per town. So with tonight's action for amending the agreement, if Bourne was no longer a participant in that arrangement, it was just the upper Cape three towns, if you'd presume that next year, the fee returned to the town would be roughly equivalent, then we would go from 35 to about $47,000 a year for each of the upper Cape communities. But I think that the major thing here is that you have a major asset with that rail access. It's one of only two operating facilities like that on the Cape. It's this facility and Town of Yarmouth has a similar facility. So for any and all future purposes, you really have something in your pocket that you would be able to fall back on if anything should happen. I should also point out, the county, meaning the Cape Cod Commission, has been looking very hard at solid waste alternatives, solid waste and recycling alternatives, Capewide. And I think that that's as a consequence of the state's actions over the years. They're not allowing any more facilities be constructed, no additional landfills. Question becomes, where's the future of solid waste? Whether it be recyclables or trash, where is it going to go? We really don't have the processing facilities within the state, so they are seriously considering rail haul out of state at this point. That's not final, but that is what is currently being evaluated as a future cost-effective option. I don't necessarily see that that way. I think that the Commonwealth is better served if they try to look at this as more as an industry as opposed to a problem. But the date, that hasn't happened yet, but that would be my hope for the future. So I would recommend that the Board agree to amend the contract and then further agree to just have the three remaining towns continue that agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. Questions, Mr. Patterson?
Yep, what's the likely future of CMAS as a disposal for trash in general? Because we were a charter member of creating that facility. Well, what's its future from your perspective?
The state is no longer permitting those types of facilities. I would have to say its future is going to be limited.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Brown?
Are you aware of how much acreage is on this site, other than what's actually immediately being used by Mr. Cavosa?
It's approximately 19 acres is what the site is under the agreement. It's 18.76 acres.
And having been out there, I would say he only uses three or four or five at the most?
Yes.
I know in the past, Mr. Cavosa had ambitions to have a composting facility at his own property on 151, but the planning board determined that there was not enough room on that site. And I wonder, I know that there's some talk now of the need for regional composting sites. Maybe there could be two on Cape Cod, and I wonder if, in your opinion, would you say that that might be an appropriate site to develop for composting?
It is presently one of the, one of the other things that the Cape Cod Commission is, is studying, that potential. is studying, that potential, specifically for the base. So it doesn't even have to be limited specifically to that facility or site. But they are also working with the base on that issue.
Would we have the ability to offer that extra use on this site in addition to this contract? And I don't know if that's a question for you or Mr. Johnson Staub. I wonder, do we have the ability to determine whether or not we want to use some of that excess space for a composting facility if we chose to, or is that out of our control?
So the, the intermunicipal agreement is written in such a way that it is not confined to the, the rail transfer station. So yes, to the extent that, that the, that the base has, and I forget, it's a consent agreement or something, that the base has, has basically said these 18 point, this 18.8 acre site can be used by the four towns. And the intermunicipal agreement does allow for the opportunity for those four towns to entertain other, other potential uses of that site. Now, probably subject to more review and approval by the base. But yes, the, this agreement provides a mechanism to allow consideration of that.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Scott Price?
Do we know why Bourne wanted to remove themselves from this? And is there a reasoning, reason for doing so? Anything that we should be concerned about or think about for ourselves?
So all I can tell you is there was an article in one of the local newspapers that covered this, the boards, that this Bourne Board of Selectmen discussion of this item. And it was recommended by the solid waste superintendent, who said that Bourne will not need to use the, the transfer station because they have their own facility for the foreseeable future. And he identified some potential future risk that there could be costs associated with it. I would just, you know, for the, for our board's reassurance, I would say, you know, at this time, there are no such costs. And we're not locked into taking on what future costs may, may emerge, may emerge in the future. I did speak with the town administrator about the town of Bourne's involvement in this process, because all four boards need to take these same two steps. And they were, she indicated they were willing to do that. So that's what I know.
Thank you. And from your preliminary report, Mr. Johnson Staub, I see that you recommend approval of both motions, as does Director Ray Jack. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, thank you.
Madam Chair, I motion, I move that the board approve an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement among the towns of Falmouth, Sandwich, Mashpee, and Bourne for the maintenance and operation of a regional municipal services facility at the Joint Base Cape Cod dated July 1, 2018, for the purpose of affecting the town of Bourne's withdrawal from the intermunicipal agreement prior to the December 31, 2022 agreement termination date.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Madam Chair, I further move that the board vote pursuant to Article 14 of the amended intermunicipal agreement among the towns of Falmouth, Sandwich, and Mashpee to extend the terms of said intermunicipal agreement to June 30, 2026, upon the mutual agreement of said towns.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Jack, for coming back.
See you, Ray.
Okay. We will move on to vote to approve request from Wendy Y. Hill, trustee of 75 Nashewena Street Nominee Trust, owner of the 75 Nashewena Street, to apply to the Conservation Commission for invasive species management within the layout of Nashewena Street and on the abutting property to the north owned by the town of Falmouth. Is anyone here to speak to this? Please?
Aye.
And we have you slated for five minutes.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering. I'll be very brief. You've seen me before, you before, on other projects where private property owners wish to do work that is subject to Conservation Commission rules and regulations. And they wish to do it on land that may be owned by the town. And that's the case on this application. Wendy Hill owns a property on Nashewena Street and has land on the upper reaches of West Falmouth Harbor. And it abuts the harbor, so it's within jurisdiction. And the town has land directly adjacent. What she'd like to do is what we call manage invasive plant material. There's invasive plants that are starting to choke out all the native plantings that are good for the environment. And this is an opportunity for those invasive plants to be eradicated so the other desirable native plants can grow and remain healthy. So she's stepping up to do this on, on her land and the parcel next door owned by the town. It doesn't really make sense to do it only on her land because the town's invasives would invade back onto her land. So the Conservation Commission has a policy that we can't apply to them to do work on land by a private, owned by the, the town without you authorizing us to apply. If, if you authorize us to apply, we will apply. And if Conservation Commission approves the application, we'll be back because you need to grant us a license to do the work on your land. So this is just you giving us permission to apply to Conservation.
Right, to apply to the Conservation.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Just quickly, what is the invasive species?
Oh, there's, there's bittersweet. There's beginning to see evidence of some frag mites. So things we don't really want.
Right.
Growing in the native buffer.
Any other questions, comments?
I would say we should approve this and encourage this. And it'd be great if other people did this.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and encourage.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Number four, consider allocation of $120,000 from direct American Rescue Plan funds to the Edward Marks Building improvements.
I would, I would make a motion. I am the liaison to the Edward Marks Building Committee. And I will say that the town staff has made several accommodations on committee requests to do work a little above and beyond what the minimal is. So I'm not surprised that, you know, the costs are a little above, and especially in today's market. So I would support this and move approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to announce the April 2023 town meeting schedule. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The schedule is very similar to what has been adopted in previous years, based on the change in the calendar and the timeline that is laid out in the charter. So it has you announcing the schedule tonight, closing the warrant January 13. The Select Board would then vote the articles and execute the warrant January 30 and publish articles only February 3. You would have petition articles presented Monday, February 13. And then you would, the board would vote its recommendations by Monday, February 27, followed by the publish, publishing the warrant with the recommendations and mailing the warrant booklets on Friday, March 17, with town meeting Monday, April 10.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub. Okay, number six, approve annual license renewals for 2023. And as you heard Mr. Johnson Staub say, this is, there's a change in practice here. We do not have to read through every single license and the address as long as they, everything is listed on the agenda. So.
That's a big improvement.
It certainly is.
Huge, yes, huge.
Well, with that, I would move approval of all those license applications for each of the types of applications provided to us.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Licenses, approve application for a transfer of a common vector license, 12, I'm sorry, J2 Bagels, Inc., doing business as Cape Cod Bagels, 419 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth. Administrative orders, vote appointment of town accountant, Victoria Rose. Number two, approve a grant of license to Michael and Linda Lambert to maintain an existing post and lattice fence along the southwest edge of the property encroached onto road layout at 30 Davis Road. Approve request to withdraw up to $16,000 from the Manduano gift account to fund the construction of five parking attendant booths by Upper Cape Tech students using the design by Jill Neubauer Architects, Inc. Approve request from the Falmouth Housing Corporation for a waiver of the building permit fees for Scranton Ave Senior Affordable Housing Project located at 763 Main Street. I'm going to hold that.
Thank you.
Please. E, vote to accept donation from the Roger and Kathy Marino Foundation to the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department donation account in the amount of $500. And F, vote to approve expenditure in excess of $500 for the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department donation account to purchase a new replacement commercial grade range for the Falmouth Fire Department headquarters. Okay, the only one that's been held is D, and I need to recuse myself from the vote on that one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can we just hold the, the Beach Hut one, just for comment? I just want to clarify for the board. I don't want to change it or suggest to.
Yes.
Anything different. I just want to make a note.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to move all, everything on the consent agenda except C and D under administrative orders?
Move it.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Brown, you held C.
I just wanted to comment that the Beach Committee will likely come back and ask for more funds because this is five huts, but we have, I think, 16 or 17 total. So I just want to make the board aware that that'll be probably a future request.
And we did, I just want to acknowledge, I see Barbara Schneider is here, and I want to acknowledge that we did receive a letter from her.
Right.
Outlining those pieces. And I just want to acknowledge that publicly and what the committee is looking at. And the superintendent at this point wants the $16,000.
Right.
But we would expect they would come back.
Right. She's being practical on the timeline and the ability to produce.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
This is a question, really, maybe is, the diagram didn't suggest to me that there's a sort of a counter that separates the attendants from anybody in the public that's walking up. I didn't know whether it was there and just not indicated in the illustration. But just from a practicality standpoint, it, it didn't look like it was going to function very well to me. And I just didn't know whether there was some information that was just left out.
And we have the Beach Superintendent here to address that. Mr. Patterson, thank you.
Hi, Maggie Clayton, Beach Superintendent for the town of Falmouth. We really appreciate everyone's work so far on this project. As indicated in the memo, it was something that we wanted to work on after the Capitol line item. But as an effort to improve sun protection for staff and aesthetics and safety of our beachfront property, there is not a counter at the front, though the, that is correct. The design is not missing the counter. It is so that some of the units can have a handicap accessible ramp attached to the front for moving in and out rather than a step. And the, we would put the signage that is normally on the front of the booth elsewhere so that it allows just easier access for our attendants to get in and out, to count spaces, and to greet the public and have clear line of vision regardless of their height and the sun direction at any point of the day.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And the architects are here if you had questions about.
Thank you. Mrs. Schneider?
Barbara Schneider, Chair, Beach Committee. So Maggie was not at our last meeting when we did discuss that counter. And it was actually an issue that was raised and requested that there be a, either a drop down, a fold down, or something where they'd be able to actually set their cash drawers or, you know, and so on. So that has been brought back to the architects to add a little something like that into the plan. And the other thing I wanted to apprise you of is the reason we had written you and asked, we actually voted at that meeting to ask for the full amount to cover the 16, the reason being, we have some things in the works that would possibly allow kits to be built, to be prepared. And so we're hoping that over the course of this winter, we would be able to get them built with these kits being created, much like we did the Osprey project, where Miller Starbuck has offered to step up and perhaps cut kits and even get some of the curvatures cut for us at a company that has that special kind of saw. So there's some things that we're working on that would hopefully let this all happen in a more expediated way and not just depending on Upper Cape Tech building. I talked to Peter McConerty today about the possibility of even having volunteers come and build these on certain days during the winter where we had the kits available and then we could just assemble them, much like a barn raising. So that's, those are things we're talking about. We're trying to find ways to make these, these, which will be so much better safety wise, shade wise, inclusivity wise, and additionally beautify our entrances and exits to our coastlines. So I hope that you will allow us to come back quickly and say, we have a way to do this where we can actually get going on this and make these kits.
Thank you, Mrs. Schneider. Hey, do I have a motion?
Final comment?
Yes.
Thanks to Jill Neubauer and her associates for providing that design for us?
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I have motion to approve.
Okay, we have.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'll entertain a motion on D to approve the request from the Falmouth Housing Corp. So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to take a look at the minutes. Public session October 3 and public session October 24.
I found them to be comprehensive and covered everything that I recall. So I would move to approve the minutes of the open session on October 3, 2022, and release for public access.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and release the minutes of public session October 3, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
October 24, 2022.
I'm sorry, those were not in the packet.
Those were not in the packet. No, yeah.
So those are held. I'm sorry, I think you did mention that.
Yep, exactly. Yeah.
Okay. Executive session September 12. The recommendation is to approve and not release. Correct, Mr. Johnson Staub?
Madam Chair, let me, let me clarify that. There are two items in, two executive session items for that same date. And the first one can be released. That's with respect to the contract negotiations with myself. And the second set, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, I would ask that you hold.
Okay.
Okay. Can I ask on that second one, I don't see a recording of the vote in the minutes here. I think it was just left out. If we can clarify that, then we can pass it as edited.
Thank you.
I assumed it was a unanimous vote.
I think it was.
I think it was, sure.
We do need to make that correction. So we'll.
Yeah, I think it, right. So, yeah. So with that edit, I would move that we vote to approve the executive committee sessions on September 12, 2022, 6:30 PM. That's two. And the one listed as three, and the one that's listed as four, and the one that's listed as, that's it. And not be released for public access.
Okay, you have a motion, second, and a second. All those in favor of approving and not releasing, the second, correct, Mr. Johnson Staub?
Correct. So we can, we can release one, three, and four, but not two.
One, three, and four. Yes.
Oh, okay, we can re, oh, I didn't realize it was, okay, so, right. And then not release Oh, okay, we can re, oh, I didn't realize it was, okay, so, right, and then not release?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Nope, that's not correct.
Let's get this straight.
It's a little confusing.
It's just the first set that can be released. Two, three, and four should be held. My apologies.
Okay, and that was my motion. So we'll stick with that.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keep those separate for reading.
Now, did we approve the first minute?
The.
And not release?
Yeah, the second one, the comment about not having the vote, I should have that.
The original vote may not, did you not include the first set in your original motion? You may not have.
I did not. And so we need to approve those minutes and release them.
Yes.
So that's my motion. Then for item number one, on Monday, September 12th, executive session, I'd like to approve those minutes and release for public access.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town manager's supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just two items tonight. To begin with, I want to provide a brief status report on the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Included in your packet is a memo from housing coordinator Kim Fish, which identifies applications for funds that have been received, two of them, and others which are anticipated within a year. At present, there is an uncommitted balance of just over $7 million in the fund. We recently received two applications for a combined total of just over 2.5 million. And Kim has identified six additional projects for which he anticipates applications in the coming year. And those are estimated dollars only, but rough estimates are about 5.8 million for those anticipated applications. We will ask the Community Preservation Committee to consider allocating an additional $3 million to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund at the April Town Meeting. Based on the Select Board's prior votes, my proposed budget will allocate approximately $925,000 from rooms excise tax revenues. So that's a recurring funding source, including three components that have been identified in the enclosed budget forecast. So that's just a sort of a status report on the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. And then lastly, a brief update on Mayflower Wind. To my knowledge, Mayflower Wind has not filed updated plans with the Energy Facility Sitings Board or the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office. The proposal is on hold with these agencies pending receipt of updated plans to reflect Mayflower Wind's change to HVDC technology. Likewise, town review of the proposal is on hold pending receipt of updated plans. Town staff have not been engaged in active negotiations regarding a potential future host agreement for many months. Mayflower did recently notify the town that it will include the Kite Park so-called property on Grand Avenue as a variant landfall option that can be considered by the town and the Energy Facility Sitings Board when it submits its updated plans. To that end, Mayflower has requested an updated access agreement to allow it to access all three proposed landfall sites. And I should say, three proposed options. So if anything moves forward, there would be only one of these three. And those three are Worcester Court, Central Park, and the Kite Park. The access agreement, there was one previously approved by the board, which either has or is about to expire, and that is to conduct engineering studies, soil tests, and environmental studies. Consideration of this updated access agreement will be on the Select Board's agenda for December 19th or a future meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, Select Board reports.
Maybe I could just add to Peter's report. I did attend a CPC meeting where that request for two and a half to $3 million did come up in the discussion. And I would say, they didn't act on it. They want to put it off until the meeting that will occur this month prior to the closing of the budget. But they certainly sounded inclined to support that. So just report that. The other thing that came up that I might mention in that meeting was that they actually went through and reviewed all of the town meeting articles that they are planning to submit for the spring 2023 town meeting. So a pretty good meeting, I would say, and no surprises. And I'd say they're very supportive of adding additional money from the CPA monies to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Let's see. I did get communication from Peter Clark. They're suggesting that we support this initiative of Comcast. It's a reduced rate for eligible people to have access to internet services. I think it's too late for us to be able to act on it at this meeting, but at least if it can be done through whoever the provider is, it would be a helpful thing. Just wanted to mention that. And then two things that are coming up. The Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association meeting this Friday. It's at 8:30. It's at Seacrest. It's close by, so might try to make that one. This whole nitrogen regulations from part of Title V is going to be a major topic. And then there will be legislators there from the state to kind of keep us abreast of some of the latest, the things that are moving through the, you know, the Massachusetts Legislature here currently, and issues that they're addressing. And the last one is a reminder that the Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting is Friday, January 20th. I am only planning to go on the Friday. I'm going to go in early in the morning and then come home after the dinner. And dignitaries, maybe our new governor will come and speak because that's frequently happened in the past. But if anybody's interested in carpooling, I'd be happy to join them or happy to drive. I've done it for eight years. And I know the ropes. I know how to get in and out of that huge cavernous parking lot underneath of the Heinz Center and get close enough to the entrance door. Because you can end up walking about three blocks if you don't know where you're going in that cavern.
What was the name of that again?
Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I'm surprised. You should have received notices. It's possible that you're.
It kind of looks like junk mail.
Oh, it does.
And the focus filter will have eliminated it from your normal view, if you will. So if you go in there and choose everything, you'll find it in there, the invitation.
Okay.
They did warn that if you wanted to spend the night at the Sheridan, I guess it is, that's the hotel right there, that they expected the rooms to fill up quickly. So if you want to spend the night and go back for the Saturday session, better get your room reservation in quick.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Brown?
I will just add to what Mr. Patterson said about the meeting this coming Friday that we've actually, on the agenda, have, hopefully, we're going to come to some sort of consensus for the membership to compose a comment letter of their own to send to DEP as well. So if you have time, at the Seacrest, breakfast is good.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, the distinct privilege of attending my first Eagle Scout ceremony. I sat in for the illustrious Mr. Patterson, who usually does it every time. And I have to tell you, the den mother, Lynn Briggs, took good care of me. It was a very, very eye-opening ceremony. And it was, it was an illustration of how there are still parts of a community or organizations that teach the core basics of teaching men how to be men. And in this case, they were all, you know, Owen Lovell, we reaffirmed his proclamation. And it was my pleasure, Sam, and I thank you for asking me to attend.
It's a troop, by the way, scout troop. Den's are at the Cub Scout level.
Shows my, I'm brand new at it, so.
Thank you.
No.
No, thank you.
And thanks for covering for me because.
Absolutely.
I enjoy them all.
I've covered a couple of those. It's pretty enjoyable, isn't it, really? It's pretty intense.
Yeah.
For a young person, it must be quite a moment.
There was a moment with him and his step-grandfather that you just can't recreate anywhere. And a statement that he made, he was nervous, and it was just, it was very touching ceremony.
Yeah.
And I enjoyed it immensely.
Mr. Scott Price?
I think I have two things to report. As I mentioned earlier, I toured the wastewater treatment facility. Amy Lowell gave me a great tour. We were out there for a little while. Really amazing work that they do out there that we don't, like I said, we don't want to have to think about it. Because when we have to think about it, that means something is wrong.
Yeah.
But they do the work every day, and they keep us going, which is awesome. And tomorrow, there is a Habitat for Humanity build. There's still spots left for those who may be interested in volunteering out at Willett Way. Probably going to do some painting. Starts about 7:45 and goes until 3-ish. So if anyone's interested, I'm happy to resend that along. I know nobody's busy or has anything else to do tomorrow.
I'd love to, but I'll be doing some unaffordable construction.
Yeah. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. A discussion on any future agenda items?
I, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think it was our last meeting, I mentioned that the Housing to Protect Cape Cod, I wanted to get more information about the huddles and what that meant and potentially bring in that before the board as a future agenda item. Turns out, I completely misunderstood what that was. And so apparently, they're reaching out to towns that they feel are most apt for change at this moment. And so my idea of inviting them to come and do some work is not quite how they want to do it. So I think I had asked for that to be on a future agenda item, and I don't want that anymore.
We will take that off.
I'd like to have one that's a little more difficult, but it's, I think it's a good thing to do. I've talked in the past about my wish to extend a sewer lineup to East Falmouth ahead and in parallel with the current sewer planning. And I know that that was not strongly received, but I wanted to mention that I attended an affordable housing funding meeting with Mass Housing, and there was a state senator, and it was very informative about all the funding options. And I asked specifically, are there funding options through Mass Housing to supplement infrastructure for affordable housing? And I was told very encouragingly that the Mass Housing's one-stop page can supply up to $400,000 in design fee, design funds, grant funds. And then the, I forget the name of it, but there's infrastructure funds that are slated to be coming out in the coming year, which might provide as much as $4 million per project, per town, for infrastructure that could be implementing affordable housing. So I would like to move forward with seeking the funds for the design of a sewer line out to East Falmouth, to a point to be determined by the, you know, the amount of funds and how much design we can get, how far east we can go. If we can make it all the way to Central Ave, I'd like to do that. But I really would encourage the board to embrace this idea because we're going to be pushed into searing likely faster than we want. So I think it would be wise to use some of this infrastructure funding to do the biggest part of our heavy lifting, to get us started so that when we do come to it, we're ahead of the game.
Can I just ask you one, Mass Housing one-stop, is that what you said?
Yeah.
I just want to look it up. Okay.
That's the way you find it.
That's how you find, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
And then it's a different funding source for the actual construction dollars. And I'm sorry, I had the page, and I had all my notes, and I'll find it eventually, but I couldn't find it today.
No, it's just, it sounds like you can go on that and look at the.
Yeah, you can.
Funding.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to.
For the design.
Right, exactly. But that's step one.
Right, exactly.
And EDIC actually has used that opportunity. It's accessible.
All right, great. I'll take a look, too. Anything else for future agenda items?
One item at a time.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for the early start.